Regular meeting of planning. I'll call the regular meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission of the town of Andover to order. First up is a roll call and seating of alternates. I see Anne Creme present. Leanne is present. Steve Nelson's present. I do not see Scott Person here. So, based on that, at this point, Anne Marie, I will seat you as an alternate for Scott Person.
Sounds good.
And I am present as well. I also see that Kevin Arnison is here as an alternate tonight. Next up are additions or changes to the agenda, and I have none. Does anybody have any additions or changes? Okay. Next item up is public comment. Any comment from members of the public that on items other than what we've got on the agenda tonight?
Mr. Chairman, this is Catherine Hutchinson. And I'm respectfully requesting permission to speak when the item comes up later on in the agenda under Old Business 6A.
Understand. Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to new business. And first up is the town ordinance enabling the zoning enforcement officer the authority to access fines for zoning violations. And at this point, I'd like to turn over to Dennis O'Brien, the town's attorney, to brief us on the ordinance. Dennis, I see that you are muted. So we can't hear you yet.
Me myself.
Okay, there you go.
Okay, you got it right. I am Dennis O'Brien, and I am the town attorney, and I've been in that position now for more than 20 years. And I I don't do much with the zoning commission. I did appear in front of the zoning commission fairly recently regarding the community center issue. But normally, I do not do zoning work in Andover. I did, I think when I first started, I did for a while. Anyway, back in, I've been, I was a legal aid lawyer for 23 years, and then I I left and I became a town attorney and a judge of probate, but I've been town attorney in several towns, and when I first started as town attorney in towns like Ashford and Mansfield, I was asked to I was handling zoning work, and I was asked to do some lawsuits under General Statute Section 8-12 to attempt to get owners or people who control property to not violate the zoning, certain zoning regulations. And that involved filing a lawsuit in Superior Court. Took a lot of time, cost a lot of money. It was a very complex process, and that was the only thing that was available at the time. But then, a few years later, the legislature in its wisdom passed a new statute, 8-12A, General Statutes 8-12A, that permitted towns to do what they were able to do in other areas of the law with ordinances, and that is to establish fines for violations of zoning ordinances, and then to enforce those fines through a process that involved notice to the alleged offender and an opportunity for them to comply. And then, after a certain period of notice, if they didn't, then the zoning agent would follow through and cite them for the violation. And the violation would carry a fine, and the fine is can be established by an ordinance, and that's the ordinance that you have in front of you that I submitted to Jim Halassee. I have one of those in place in Chaplain. The reason that, well, in Mansfield, it was very easy to implement because there were people, for some reason or other, you know, people in Mansfield think they can do anything. And there were people in Mansfield that are always willing to volunteer to be hearing officers and to act as judges in these cases and decide whether, in fact, somebody had violated an ordinance and should be fined. And, but the problem is, I didn't anticipate this. Coming from a town like Wyndham, I didn't anticipate this at all. But in towns like Andover and Chaplain, who I still represent, it was not easy to find anyone that was willing to do this in their own town, in a smaller town, and act as a judge of their own, you know, co-residence. And recently, Jim Halassee and I did a case involving zoning, but it also involved a blight. And we, the town, and the person, Eric Anderson, our town administrator recruited a gentleman who agreed to become the hearing officer for the town. And he volunteered, and I trained him. And we had our first hearing on September 13th. And I'd say it went really, really well, and we got an order from him. And it was successfully brought by Jim Halassee. And we got a conclusion where there was a fine. And in a blight situation, you don't even have to take it to court after you get the after you get the judgment. You can just lean the property. And that's what we did. But in the zoning situation, what happens is if you go through the whole process, person doesn't comply, and the fines, you know, the fines are daily fines. Okay, I've written, the way I've written the ordinance, I made it $30 a day. That's because in the past, when we first put the ordinance in to the town meeting for the other ordinances that carry fines, not zoning, which is a different statute. We had, there was a large group of people that came to the hearing, and there was some opposition to it. And I think, you know, we were concerned about fining people too much. And so we went with, I think, $25 or $30 for that ordinance. But I'm suggesting $30 for this, $30 a day, which can add up. Okay, the statute, 8-12A, as I mentioned, that covers this zoning area, falls for a possible fine of up to $150 bucks a day. Okay, that's a lot. $150 a day, that's like Fairfield County fine. Maybe, maybe, maybe certain parts of Talon County, but not Andover. Anyway, I've drafted an ordinance based on the ordinance that we have in Chaplain. And it is, it goes through a process that somebody would have to go through if the zoning agent were to fine them or attempt to fine them. I mean, the goal is not to collect fines. The goal is to get people to comply with the zoning regulations. And this is not something that replaces filing a lawsuit. Okay, it's an alternative. Both options are still available. This is just another tool in the toolbox. And I think it will work well. We have an excellent hearing officer now, Mr. Rizley. And I think we could do this. I think there are cases that could be brought this way, that we could cite somebody for the violation, give them a certain amount of time, whatever is reasonable in the in the mind of the zoning agent to fix the violation. And if the violation is not fixed by the deadline, then you go ahead and you cite them. And in the citation, you fine them for, it would be 30 bucks a day if we go along with what I suggested. You could go higher or lower. And this is something that would have to be it would have to be approved first by the gatekeeper, the Board of Selectmen. And then it would have to go to the town meeting, to pass the town meeting. What I did in Chaplain, when we passed the Chaplain ordinance 10 years ago, was I went to, gave the Planning and Zoning Commission the opportunity to have input. Because they should, because you're working with the zoning regulations, and you know the regulations far better than I do. But that's what I'm doing here. I'm asking you to look this over, ask any questions you might have, and let me know what you think. And I'm pretty committed to this kind of approach because I cannot see, having had the experience spending a lot of time suing somebody to try to get them to cure, say, a setback violation. And this, to me, would be a real incentive for people to to comply with the regulations. Word gets around, and it's just another tool in the toolbox of the zoning agent and also the town attorney, me. And it would be easier for me. It's something that I'm familiar with. I had a lot of these cases in Mansfield. They were not zoning, but they were all violations of, Mansfield has a lot of ordinances that fall for fines. It worked very well, and most, and the hearing officers did well. I attend the hearings for a while until the hearing officer is ready to handle them on his own. But it's a very simple, relatively simple in a procedure that is handled by the citizens of the town. And what you do at the end of the trail, if you get a judgment, say, for $1,000 worth of fines against an individual, the zoning, I'm sorry, the hearing officer fills out a form, very simple forms, it's a state court form, and passes it on to me. I file it with the Superior Court in Talon County. And I pay an $8 filing fee as opposed to 350 for the lawsuit. And pretty much, if the the person who's fined doesn't appeal within 30 days, the fine becomes a judgment, a court judgment. It has the effect of a court judgment. It can be implemented by a wage execution, which I doubt we would use in a zoning situation, or by placing a lien on the property where the offense was committed. And that's pretty much, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. And it's just another way to deal with some of these cases where zoning regulations are are violated and you know, compliance has not been obtained. So that's my basic talk on this. And I would be very happy to answer any questions.
So at this point, Dennis, I did send, well, Jim sent the draft ordinance out to all the commission members, so they've had a chance to take a look at it. I know Jim had a couple of comments, and can you discuss what the comments were that you had already, Jim?
I just pointed out that there was discrepancy in the amount of fine. At one point in the draft, it mentioned $25 and another 30. And Dennis corrected that. And I had a comment about citing both the owner and the violator, in case of a business or a rental property. And I believe that was in there anyway upon further review, but nonetheless, it's there now. I believe that's about it.
Okay, nope, sounds good.
I've redrafted, I've taken Jim's excellent comments and made changes in the latest draft, and I'll send them on to Jim, and I'm, I'm really pleased by working with Jim. The experience we had working on that blight case together was a good one, but it took a while, or it wasn't easy, but I'm used to that. That's the way it goes. But anyway, that's about the size of it. If there are any suggestions, if there are any, and they don't have to come tonight. That's up to you all. And I, you know, I really don't need to get your approval, although I'd like to. I certainly wouldn't want to go to the, back to the Board of Selectmen without it. But pass it approval would be okay, too. I mean, I just, I just wanted to give you the opportunity to comment, and Jim has already done some of that. But it's something that I've done before in other towns, and it works well in certain cases, and it just gives us another. Now that we have a hearing officer in place, who's very good, by the way, we have the opportunity to do this, and one question Jim asked me, I guess there's some, maybe a case or two pending where there's a violation. And it's pending, so I, you know, under the statute, basically, it's clear that it makes each day that the violation continues a new violation. So I would say that if you have a case where somebody's been in violation for a year, and this thing goes into effect, we could not obviously fine them for anything that they didn't do in the past. But I think once the ordinance was passed by the town meeting, and there's a certain period of time before which it goes into effect, once it goes and it becomes effective, I think we could go right after that same violator and start the clock running. And I was just wondering what you all feel about fining people, and, you know, by the day. Or it sounds, it sounds a little harsh. But, you know, it's a way to gain compliance without, I mean, I've had cases where I filed in court before this went into effect, where I was tied up for two years in one case. And if the courts are slow, I have to say this, I was judge of probate in Wyndham for 12 years. And I was chief judge of the Children's Court, which covers a counting and a half, which included Andover. I did not hear Andover cases. But I did supervise, I was in charge of all the supervising the judges. If you can do that, it's like supervising cats. But I, but I did, lawyers would come, whenever lawyers had an opportunity to get or come to probate court, which were the procedures are much simpler, or go to Superior Court, where the judges wear robes, they would come to probate court. And they'd get quick action. That's what this is all about.
Well, I think it's a great idea, Dennis, and at this point, I'd like to hear any comments or questions that the other commission members have.
I have a general question.
Yep, go ahead, Anne Marie.
Not about the policy itself, but how many cases have we had or do we currently have that would have that would be subject to these fines right now? I mean, are we talking about three cases, 20 cases, 100 cases? Not 100, but.
Probably three or four at any given time.
Three or four?
Yeah.
And that's current, currently?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, this blight case that we just handled, if I may, Jim and I handled together, had zoning violations in it as well, and Jim recalls quite well. violations of a lot of things, health code, zoning code. And we were hamstrung, really, by the fact that it was, you know, I'll tell you, it was a lot easier to just go with the blight because we were able to do it through this kind of process and not having to run into court and waste a lot of time and and money. So, anyway.
I think the blight ordinance worked very well, and I was surprised when you said, Dennis, that this was a different state statute that it comes from, but I guess that's why we're doing it in two steps then, but being able to have some peak without having to get involved with the courts, I think is a great deal for the town. And so I'm in favor of it, I guess. Now, again, I'm just looking before, I will make a motion after we've had a chance to answer any questions or concerns the commission might have. If there's anything else that the commission wants to ask before I make a motion there.
Jed?
Don't have any questions, but I think it looks like a very good plan and good ordinance. It would really help to put a little bit of force behind our ordinances, otherwise people just ignore sometimes.
Well, and it did work well on that property out on Route 6, you know, that we've been talking about for a long time. So, yeah, I thought that was, that told the story. Leanne, did you have a comment you were trying to get in there?
Yes, to follow up to Anne Marie's question, if we, what would, if we have cases that are going on right now, would these fines, if they're not resolved by the date that this goes into effect, would the daily fines start to accrue then? In other words, it would not be retroactive?
Yes, Leanne.
Is that how it would work?
It would not be retroactive, no. Normally, when you pass an ordinance or a statute, there are exceptions, but normally, normally, they are not applied retroactive. Because people haven't been forewarned. And that's, that's, you know, that's due process. Good question.
That makes sense, and I like the idea of the $25 a day where it is, rather than being way at the upper end or at the upper end. I think it makes it easier to work with people and still have something in place.
Well, we had, we had two different numbers in the draft, and I think Jim and Dennis chose to go with $30 a day instead of the 25, but it's still, you know.
Up to you, it's up to you.
Yep.
I like 30, but, you know, just to resolve it.
Right, I did notice both, and I did see that you changed 25 to 30 tonight, so still, it's, according to Attorney O'Brien, is far from the upper end of what's in the statute.
Right.
150 is the upper end, and that's, that's a pretty stiff fine. And if you go to, I think if you go to a town meeting in Eastern Connecticut with opposing a fine of 150 bucks a day, you're gonna have a tough time passing the ordinance. I think that's too much. That's just my own personal feeling, based on many, many years of experience.
Okay, so with that, I will make a motion that the Planning and Zoning Commission favorably endorse the draft ordinance on zoning violations and forward it to the Board of Selectmen for further action.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Anne. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. Ian?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Anne Marie?
Aye.
Can I vote aye as well? That motion passes 5-0-0. Thanks for attending tonight, Dennis, and I think that's good work that you've got there.
I thank you very much, and I appreciate the good work that you all do as well, and you have a great rest of the meeting. Thank you.
Thanks, Dennis.
Next up is under New Business, appointment to the Capital Region Council of Governments Regional Planning Committee. And Jim, did you want to talk to that?
Sure, Capital Region Council of Governments has a Regional Planning Committee. Needs four times a year, I believe, Thursday of the month, meets virtually at this point in time. And they go over issues that affect regional planning in the area. A specific concern right now is the Capital Region Plan and Conservation and Development, which I think is why they reached out to the town, trying to get a member of our commission to serve on that committee, CROX Committee. And their role would just sort of be to participate and bring information back to the commission, the local commission here.
So I did note, I got a copy of the dates from John, and the June meeting that they have is on the same night as our Planning and Zoning Commission, so we wouldn't be able to support that. So that would get us down to three meetings for the year, the first of which is this Thursday. And I didn't know if there was any interest of anybody on the commission to, you know, want to go and participate in those meetings on behalf of our commission. And that's about where I expected the that to go. I know I had asked John, John, didn't you say you were an alternate for the town of Columbia? I wasn't sure that Columbia was in that group.
Yep. So it's possible that I can attend some, depending on the needs of the Columbia member. Just Tom Courier.
And you said you had a conflict for this Thursday coming up?
I do, yes.
I can probably attend that one, and I think, you know, the right, I have as much desire as anybody else to go to more meetings than, but I may see if I can sit in this Thursday night and get that started. I would obviously prefer, John, if you can attend on behalf of both Andover and Columbia, that's that's as cost effective as we can get it. But since you're tied up here, and so somewhere down the line, if we work that conflict out, maybe you can be the primary course, and I would be an alternate going forward on that.
That's fine.
Okay, and that's about all that that's all that I had. Anything else, John or Jim, on that particular issue? Okay. Okay, I think that wraps up New Business. Now we'll proceed on to the old business, and first up is the status of the gravel pit, Jim?
Okay, I met with Alan Kirkto from Halloran Sage and Jed today, and we had been provided a lot of the information previously and gone over it, looked at our website, all the documents on the website. We viewed the YouTube once again, and Alan was of the opinion, he did not recommend bringing going forth with a lawsuit. He felt that the applicant was largely in compliance with the plan. There was some, just there was some discussion about the flow of water, and as we watched the YouTube several times, it became less clear or more clear that perhaps the commission assumed the water was continuing. The demarcation line was a little different than was being represented in the meeting. Meaning that a little more water flowed off to the south, towards the Hutchinson property. Then the commission was originally under the impression would happen. He did also, he further pointed out that, you know, anything that's done on this property needs a special permit, meaning anything in the future. It's currently on the market, and quote, the town would have another bite at the apple. He did not, he did say that the town could pursue legal, could take legal action if they so chose. He just wasn't recommending it.
And I think, Jim, he talked about the fact that there was a new judge that was a bit of an unknown, talked about the lengthy process through the courts. And quite honestly, you know, in just getting to where we had our meeting today, we've had some significant cost for attorney's fees on doing the research that led up to today's meeting and all that. So, yeah, clearly, he was not inclined to think that we should be going any further. He said he was. He said he was, he thought the applicant was substantially in accordance with the plan that was approved. And, and after reviewing it many times and having that long conversation today, I guess I don't disagree with him. We, we all agreed that we didn't know exactly why, you know, in why the, I think, I'm gonna call it 696-foot elevation line that wasn't really a line on the drawing, was so far away from the 694, which was the end of the floodplain. And when we say so far, it it was like tens of feet, not quarters of miles or something like that, but it did seem that what they have is in agreement with the drawing there. The drawing just didn't have enough detail, and if there's any fault there, that is probably, that might be my fault for not demanding more detail, but I thought we were pretty close when we were talking that night. Not as close as, as I thought we were. And, and we have been trying to get through a restoration plan for five years now on what was supposed to have been a one-year project, start to finish, so maybe I get beat into submission a little bit there, but it does seem like the water is being absorbed into the property and not running down over that steep side into the, into the floodplain there. Anything else to add on that, Jim?
No.
Any, any of the commission members have any thoughts on that at this point? Okay, Ms. Hutchinson, I guess it's yours.
Yes, thank you very much. Obviously, I am concerned about the conclusion that was reached, that yes, there was more water flowing toward my property, and that, however, that the commission is recommended to the commission that nothing be done about it. And I would respectfully request that the commission give some serious consideration toward dealing with it. I understand it's an expensive process. But the commission made it clear during the entire application process that the water was to be graded so that it did not flow toward the east or south of my property. And with that was supposed to be shown on the plan that was submitted, a restoration plan that was submitted, and ultimately, the commission went with, that did show, had the arrows pointing toward the proposed low point in the middle, running down the middle, the proposed area that was to drain it toward the back. And I guess at this point, I would respectfully request the commission give some consideration to pursuing that as opposed to just letting things go.
Okay, and Jim and I did talk today about the latitude that this new ordinance might provide to us if we get there. I, John, if you can, I'm gonna try and post the approved map that's under the archive section there that we talked about on 8/15, and if you were familiar enough with that and could call it up, that would be great. If, if you don't think so, if you let me to share my screen, I will try to call that up. I'm concerned that, you know, when, when Al and Jim and I were looking, we, we were looking at a blow up of the screen there, and I won't have the technical skills to blow it up right, so everybody can see what we were talking about, but I will give it a quick attempt.
You should be able to share.
And, yep, and I don't see what I was looking for here, so I guess we will have to put that off, we'll get our ducks in a row a little bit better, and at the next meeting, have the right drawing that we can show to everybody and, and explain what was briefed to us and why we think it's substantially in compliance, and, and discuss it more at that point.
I just have one other question slash request. I, has either you or Jim or anyone seen the erosion on the southerly side that my property, that my side is on, up close?
Are you talking about on the, on the gravel pit property where it slowed down as you get close to that mound there? Or you talked about someplace specifically?
As you're looking at it from Route Six, the right-hand side, it joins 50 feet away, my property. That whole stretch, the full flat area, as well as in the back where the hill, with the hill in the back, there's I believe that's where you're referring to the erosion. I'm referring to the erosion that exists basically from Route Six all the way back.
I have not been out there recently. Jim, you can speak to it if you're familiar with it, but I have not.
I have not been out there. When our dialogue fell apart, I had asked for, I asked Genevieve if I could access his property to monitor it, and he never responded to me. And at that point, I chose not to. I'd be happy to follow up, but it didn't occur to me. I, I did see it, you know, previous to that, I could access it from your property, Catherine.
Yes, you certainly could. I was just gonna suggest that.
Yeah. As long as, as long as, as it's accessible, you know, it's extremely overgrown at some point. I don't know where on the property. But I'd be happy to give it a shot.
Perhaps I could touch base with you, because it's been pretty wet, but there may be a way of getting a strip mowed along my line, obviously, on my property, so that we might more easily access it. But why don't you look into it, and I'll speak with you, and we'll go from there.
Okay, and I don't mind walking, it's just, it's just extremely, a lot of brambles and such.
Yeah, well, perhaps, as I said, we could get a strip mowed, run it through there so that you could see it more easily.
I'd be happy to do that.
Great. I'm not guaranteeing it, because I don't know how wet it is there, but to get a tractor down.
Sure.
To get in there, but either, either that or we put on briar-free resistant clothes and go for a walk. I'll touch base with you.
Okay.
Great.
And so, you know, at the next meeting, one of the things we might choose to do is once again do a site walk over there so that the commission can see exactly what Ms. Hutchinson's concerns are. I know we did that when, it led to the conversation that I thought we had a better agreement than we did with where that water was gonna go. But anyhow, so between now and the next meeting, I will make sure that we have the documentation that I can get up on the screen to present and, and show what our attorney thought. And then we'll, we'll make the decision based on input from Jim on whether or not we want to do a site walk on that. Any other comments on the gravel pit? Okay, I'm gonna move on to item 6B, Connectivity Grant Trails, and John, I was hoping you could just give us a quick update. I had to leave early from the, you know, public information session the other night. How, how did that end up going? Yep, yes, Leanne.
Yes, I, I thought I was unmuted. I had a couple of questions about the gravel pit.
Oh, go ahead, yep.
One is, Jim, did the attorney go out there in person?
No, he did not. He did look at the Asbilly drawing, did not go out there in person.
Okay, and I have a, a real concern that everyone knows how much time we've spent on this, and I have a couple of comments. One is that, you know, Mr. Genevieve has not responded to several attempts at correspondence, and, you know, that were sent directly to him or through Chris Bell. So this is not the first time when Jim said that he didn't hear back from him about walking the property himself. So he does have a habit of doing this, and I think it would be a real obstacle to all of the work that we've put in, as a Jed, it's been, I think, almost exactly five years since we went on the site walk there, to just drop, so to speak, the restoration plan. I don't think enough has been done with that, so I hope that that's one of the things we can take up next month.
Yes, we will.
Okay, thanks.
Yep. Okay, John, now we'll move on to the Connectivity Grant presentation.
Okay, so as, as Jed said last week, Tuesday, I believe, there was a, a public information session to discuss the town's initiatives to develop some bicycle and pedestrian connectivity basically between the, the town's civic campus, where the town hall and elementary school and the senior center are, and the Hop River Trail and the municipal facilities to the north side of Route Six, which include the athletic fields and the post office and, and church and that sort of thing. So there, we had had some initial discussions about having a visioning session to determine which route to pursue, and the two main routes were, you know, more or less an on-road option, or a, you know, a, an option immediately off of Route 316, and then the other option being overland, basically through the woods, through the town-owned land to the rear of town hall and seniors, and the senior center out to the Hop River Trail. And upon discussing it, we determined that it was, both, both routes were preferred for sort of different reasons, different purposes, different target users. They're both worth pursuing, and there are different funding mechanisms to provide for both. So, working with our consultant, Barton and the Judas Engineering, we first tackled the question of the on-road, I, I shouldn't say on-road, because it would be a multi-use trail on the side of Route 316 from School Road all the way to Cider Mill, and then it would go literally on-road, basically a shared road on Cider Mill, linking back with 316 and, and being alongside the road for that short stretch heading north to the Hop River Trail, and it would sort of go up the hill to meet the Hop River Trail. There was a lot of individual input from property owners along 316, because this would be essentially a very wide sidewalk, some, somewhere between six and 10 feet wide paved off of the side of the road, which would be basically almost entirely within state right-of-way, so not actually on private people's property. However, there would be some elements of, that it would encroach a little bit because of slope and, and grading and width of the right-of-way and telephone poles and things like that, where it would encroach a little bit onto people's land. But, you know, again, would be on state property, although, you know, if you, if you abut 316, the whole front yard feels like yours. So, so there was a lot of conversation with the people who, that the trail would cross their, their, in front of their land. And it was, you know, people had concerns but were generally supportive. And the, the good thing is, we were able to sort of fast-track the design schematic process and submit a grant to LOTSIP, which is the Local Transportation Capital Improvement Program, funded through the Capital Region Council of Government. And while we haven't received any sort of official word on that, the information from the Capital Region is that they received, that they, they had more money in their fund than they got project applications. So, as long as, you know, as long as we didn't, you know, scribble on a, you know, wet napkin and crayon, and it was a legitimate application, it could be fundable. So I think that's good news. Obviously, the, the designs were preliminary, and there's a lot of work still to be done, but, but it seems very positive at this point. So that, we'll hopefully hear on that one soon. The second path is the overland path, which would be, you know, obviously steeper, sort of less friendly to a quick commute, and if you're, you know, trying to get from one place to another, it wouldn't necessarily be the path you'd take. But it is, it does help create a continuous loop and another way to get, you know, to access other, other state and town facilities. That is still very preliminary design, and we basically filed for a DEP rec trails grant for, you know, a small amount of money to basically bring that to engineering design. So we're not looking necessarily to build anything there yet, but just sort of take the next step. And so what's nice is, you know, when, when sort of faced with a choice of, you know, should we focus on this trail or focus on this trail? We got to say both, and, and hopefully both concepts will be moving literally and figuratively down the road soon.
Any questions for John on that?
Good. John, on the first option that you talked about, the, the trail adjacent to the road, what's the timing on that grant application, and when, when would we think the town would receive funding?
Um, I, you know, the, the grant went in mid-February. And it was, you know, it's preliminarily at CROG, my, my anticipation would be they'd probably make the, the preliminary announcement within the next month or so. I mean, these projects are always a little, you know, attenuated, particularly if state money is involved. And, you know, not only is state money involved, but state roadways are involved. But I would anticipate if we, if we heard something and got under contract sometime this summer, we could probably spend the, you know, the, the next nine months doing final design and working with the, the OT on, on permit pathways. You know, if all goes well, could we start construction next summer? I think it's possible. I think it's probably more reasonable that we'd be looking for completion probably 2026, but I, you know, I think it's, it's possible to get underway next year. Would be my anticipation, and, you know, fortunately Eric is not with us to contradict me and, you know, jump up and down and go, don't tell them that. But I, I, I think that's not, that's not a crazy thought. But again, it's, it's the state, state grant, state money, state property, so sometimes the wheels turn slow.
Thanks, John. It does sound really encouraging.
Yeah, I think, I mean, the real, the key is, you know, I think it's, it's, it's an obvious community benefit. The, the key will be to make sure that both the OT and the, the property owners along the trail sort of have their concerns heard.
Yeah. Any other questions or comments for John? Okay, hearing none, let's move on to the update on the plan of conservation and development. And John, that's you again.
Okay, well, we have our quorum, and we have our technology seems to work, so. our quorum and we have our technology seems to work, so, um, I'll do that. Does this look like a PowerPoint presentation to everyone?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna buzz through this a little bit. So we're going through two elements of the plan of conservation and development process. First is just a quick demographic overview, sort of a snapshot of where we are as a town. Um, and then I harvested the, the most, most recent responses from the survey that we've done, um, and so we'll kind of go over some preliminary results, but I'd note that the survey is still open and we're still getting, getting in responses every day.
And John, I did note, uh, that in the little inbox, uh, there at the entrance to the town hall today, there were probably ten to fifteen
That's right.
surveys, so.
Okay, I'll have to, I'll have to swing past and, and pick them up.
Yep.
Um, okay, thanks for the note. Um, okay, so again, I, I'm, have a, a number of, um, demographic slides here. We'll caveat all of these by saying, um, we're already a couple of years old. We use for the most part, um, twenty twenty census figures, although I think things are not changing very quickly in Andover. Um, and then the second thing is, you know, much of this is pretty self-evident. I'm not telling you guys anything you don't know. But, um, so, uh, Andover's population, a little over thirty-one hundred as of twenty twenty. Um, primarily strongly, almost ninety percent, uh, non-Hispanic white, um, with small minorities of, um, non-Hispanic multiracial, four percent, um, non-Hispanic blacks, one, um, and, and other, and, and four percent Hispanic. Um, the bottom chart shows basically, uh, how Andover stacks up in those things in those, uh, ethnic classes relative to the state. Uh, Andover is in green, is the green bar. Um, so you'll see at the bottom, that's the white only. Obviously, Andover is more white than the state as a whole. Um, the, uh, sort of rust-colored bar in the middle is Tolland County and the, uh, blue is the, the state of Connecticut as a whole. So the state of Connecticut as a whole is a little over sixty percent white, Andover is a little over ninety percent white. Um, the state is about fifteen to twenty percent Hispanic and, and again, Andover is about four percent. So it's, it's relatively homogenous relative to the, the rest of the state. Um, population estimates, uh, you know, the, the, the chart looks like things are dropping off a cliff, but, you know, the, 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 uh, the Y-axis of that chart is really only, you know, three thousand fifty people to thirty-three hundred and fifty people. So it's a three hundred-person span from top to bottom of the chart. So you will note, you know, over, over, um, a few years, uh, Andover's population has, has declined from about thirty-three hundred to about thirty-one fifty. Um, I think it's probably not that, um, we, we lost, you know, eighty people or so, um, between twenty nineteen and twenty twenty. It's, it's possible. Um, some of that could have been, uh, out migration, some of that could have been, uh, death. You know, that twenty twenty was, the census year, it was also a COVID year. Um, so, so fatalities were a little higher that year. It's also possible, um, I'm, I'm suspecting that the population estimates leading up to twenty twenty were just that estimates, um, from the American Community Survey, um, and the twenty twenty number was a hundred percent count. So it's possible that the decline was a little bit faster and, and, and steadier heading to twenty twenty. But as of, you know, as of twenty twenty, we're, you know, about a hundred and fifty people lighter than we were in twenty ten.
Um, I'm there, John. I, I did look, you know, I was trying to find anything more recent than twenty twenty. And, uh, I went to the connecticutdemographics.com and they had a, uh, uh, population, you know, twenty twenty-two of thirty-one sixty. And so I was looking to see if, you know, when everybody started working from home, I was hoping that that would cure the decline. But, uh, in, in that data point shows that, that it did, it leveled off, but, uh, maybe not going up again. So I think, you know, we, we don't, I don't, uh, know that we have a real good
Yeah, no, we, we-
actual idea of what the, the future's gonna hold there yet. Hopefully not as dreary as what that shows.
True.
I have a comment too. Um, I've been talking to the superintendent of schools and what she's seeing with a school is that fam- houses have been selling and then been bought by families with young kids. So, uh, for a while we were dropping because of the elderly population was moving out or passing away, but now they're getting more young families in, so that we may be seeing an uptick or not as much of a drop as what they originally thought.
That's positive. Um, yeah, and, and again, what's the other thing to, to note here, which is that, I think that's a positive note, um, and um, is that, you know, these are, these are small numbers, you know, we're, we're talking about, you know, ten people, fifty people here and there. Um, or that, that, you know, could, could affect, you know, one of these, one of these charts. The population trends, uh, and projections, um, the lower left um, was from the Connecticut State Data Center. They're the only data projections we really have. Unfortunately, they were also done pre-COVID, which, which obviously shook things up somewhat. But Andover, according to this, was projected to have peaked. That is twenty-twenty, twenty twenty, I'm sorry, twenty-ten census of about thirty-three hundred. Um, and sort of have a steady, slow decline for the next, um, twenty-five years or so. I'm sorry, fifteen years or so. Um, which, you know, doesn't seem impossible, but it's also certainly not written in the stars and preordained. Um, things could certainly turn, turn around and, and again, these are very small differences. Um, so again, on the, on the right, Andover is projected to shrink by another, you know, five hundred, six hundred people or so. Um, and Connecticut is expected to grow very, very modestly, um, over that same, same timeframe. So a few, a few municipalities may, may gain, but most municipalities are, are gonna be somewhat stagnant. I think the bottom line here is, don't expect massive change, uh, one or another in the next, in the next fifteen years or so. Um, in terms of our age group demographics, um, again, we have, uh, Andover's distribution on the uh, upper left and the overall di- distribution compared to, uh, two thousand, twenty-ten and twenty-twenty on the, on the lower right. Um, the things, you know, you would note on the left is the longest bars is the largest percentage of population. Um, basically, your, your fifty to sixty, your forty-five to sixty-five essentially makes up about forty percent of the town's population. Um, the largest, the largest sort of set there. And what I would point out in the lower right bar uh, is the, the light blue is where our population curve was in twenty twenty, uh, twenty, I'm sorry, two thousand. Um, the medium blue is twenty-ten, the dark blue is twenty-twenty. So if you sort of draw a curve over each one, um, and I don't know if you can see my cursor, um, but it, it sort of peaks, the two thousand peaks between thirty-five and forty-five. Um, the twenty-ten peaks at forty-five to fifty-five essentially, and then the peak for, um, the most current census, twenty-twenty, is now at, at fifty-five to sixty-five. So, you know, the, there is some fluctuation here, but the overall peak of the population, the, the, the plurality of, of cohorts is sort of shifting old. Which, you know, again, is, it should not be surprising to anyone on this, on this call. Um, but there are, as you say, and, um, you know, the, um, the under-five, the young child, uh, demographic, um, has increased a little bit, from twenty-ten to twenty-twenty. Um, the school-age kids are significantly down, your five to fifteen are significantly down. Um, but, but your college-age kids are holding steady. Um, and again, it could be, could be a migration of, of more young families, which would be, which would be welcome.
John, uh, could you go back to that last slide again for just a minute? The typo, uh, up on the, the left hand.
This one?
You know, the third, the fourth bar down shows-
I think that should be, that should be twenty.
Twenty, yeah, okay, very good.
Thank you. Good catch. I, I, I caught that as well, but I, I should have, I should have brought attention to it before you did, because that would have seemed-
No, no, you gotta give me a chance to do something.
Um, okay, uh, so this is, um, units and structure. Um, these are our households. Um, and again, you all live in Andover, you know Andover. We're, we're very, very significantly majority, single-family detached housing. There are a few units, um, three to four units, five to nine units. Um, but by and large, it's a, it's a single-family detached town. Um, interestingly, also perhaps not surprisingly, um, in twenty twenty, um, the uh, household sizes, the one and two-person households make up over sixty percent, nearly two, of, almost two-thirds of the town's population, um, is, is in one or two-person households. So it's relatively small families. We have, you know, about, about a fifth each of three-person households and four or more. Um, but interestingly, what you see, if you look, so, so we have a lot of very small households. Um, but if you look at the graph on the right, um, which is average household size over the last, um, fifteen years. And again, this data is a little bit older. Um, or twenty, I don't know, we're almost twenty-five years of data now. Um, in two thousand, the two thousand census, household size was two-point-six-four, which is larger than either Tolland County or Connecticut, um, which were both about two-point-five-five. Um, and that stayed steady for about twenty years since then. Um, so even though, um, we have a large number of, of small households, one and two-person, um, our average household size is, is remaining relatively steady. And I think, you know, sort of reflecting that the house, the housing stock, um, you know, our, our larger houses, larger single-family, um, which are, which are certainly family-cremency. You know, you can have two, three, four kids, um, in the, in the big houses of Andover. In terms of income and unemployment, um, Andover again, not surprisingly, is a little bit, um, wealthier, uh, a little bit higher income than Tolland County or Connecticut in general. About, you know, ten, twelve thousand above Tolland County and, and twenty over the state of Connecticut. Um, which again is reflective of single-family detached, high ownership, um, economy. Um, Andover, the chart on the lower left, uh, shows you the in-migration and out-migration of jobs. Um, there are less than seventy people who both live and work in Andover. There's not a, a ton of jobs that, that, um, support an Andover lifestyle. Um, we do import about two-hundred-and-seventy people, um, come to Andover to work. But most people from Andover that are working are leaving. So over fifteen hundred people are leaving Andover, um, for work. Again, not surprisingly, uh, but the unemployment rate is extremely low in Andover. As of twenty twenty-one, we're at three percent. Um, which are, which are, which is well below even the very low numbers in Tolland County and Connecticut is in general. So, um, it's, it's, it's affluent, it's comfortable place, um, but just, you know, people don't, aren't working here. Um, so that's, that's a, a bit about the demographics, um, and again, no, no real surprises there. Um, I wanted to go through some of the preliminary results of the survey. So this ad, hopefully people have seen it. I don't know, has, has this ad been posted in deliveries?
I, I saw it, but it was sort of stuffed in with all the other ads and it, I almost missed it because it, I thought it was like another real estate ad or something like that. It should have probably been in like an article up in the top of the page instead of stuffed in the bottom, but I don't know if you had any choice.
I, yeah, I, I mean, we can, we could probably talk to, um, Eric if, if we wanna maybe buy a more prominent spot. There was an article, um, you know, about the, the survey on about a month ago now. Um, it unfortunately had the link to the survey, but it was sort of across two lines and a little bit harder to follow. I had given the, the journalist the QR code that he could paste into his article, but he opted not to. Um, but despite that, um, and, and, you know, and so this is, you know, we've been trying to promote this and hopefully it'll be in, in for another, another i- issue of River Easter two.
Yeah, it was in the last two weeks, last two Fridays.
Okay, great. Um, and we have-
Up to a hundred and eighty-one answers, so.
Right, so I-
It's not bad.
We're coming along, plus, plus your ten or fifteen that are sitting there in town hall, Jed.
Yeah.
Um, so we could, in a matter of a couple of days, be up close to two hundred. Um, so I'll go through preliminary results. Again, this is, this is as things stand right now. Um, folks, so the, the blue line, this is Liver working Andover, um, as we saw with that in-migration, out-migration. We have a very large population of folks, um, living in Andover but working in other towns. And then the orange line at the bottom is live in Andover and are retired. Um, so that tells you a little bit about the folks that are, that are filling this out. Not a lot of people, um, working in Andover. That probably just one, possibly two responses of working in Andover. Um, and as you recall, for, uh, cause I'm sure everyone on, online took the, took the survey, so you're familiar with the questions. Um, we asked people to rank highest priorities. Um, and this was under economic development and, um, even though one is the top priority and seven is the lowest priority, the way that data is projected here, is the longer bar means higher priority. So, um, so the more retail along Route Six was the most popular response. Um, and, and, you know, it was, it was most frequently people's top priority. Um, followed, you know, by more restaurants and more service and professionals, um, and as more small businesses, um, in that area. Uh, the least popular, which is nice to see, is no major changes to the economic development, um, strategy. People, people generally supported being a little bit more aggressive, particularly along Sixth Corridor. In terms of housing options, uh, in Andover, uh, again, the, the longer bar means the, the more popular answers. Um, so there was, you know, twenty percent, um, you know, stated that we don't, we are fine with our housing options as they are. But, um, far more than that, people identified young families as well as young professionals, seniors and teachers, firefighters and other, other, um, critical employees um, as being important and with young families being easily the, the plurality choice.
So, and, and so I guess, uh, when we get, get to the end of this, uh, for the commission with John's help, you know, we, we see here, we think we need more housing opportunities for young families, which I think, you know, everybody recognized what a great school we have here. We need to bring the housing opportunities and I'm not exactly sure what young families are looking for there. But we've got to build something that, uh, allows them to move into Andover so that they could take advantage of that great school that we have. And that's, that's gonna be our challenge where we can influence it is, what can we do to, uh, help build it so they will come? We've got the school. If we build the housing, I think people will come so they could take advantage of it.
Yeah, and I think, yeah, there's, I mean, those are, those are regulatory things we can do. You know, financial incentives, things that we can do, um, but then, yeah, well, well, those are all, we're brainstorming when we get to those discussions. Um, types of housing, uh, that, that are, should be provided, again, reflecting the, the established character of Andover people like. You know, people are here because they like being here. Um, and, and the character of Andover is largely single-family detached. Um, so that was the most popular option. People did find some support for single-family with accessory apartments, which is, you know, enabled by the zoning regulations, as well as some two-family and townhouses. Um, people generally didn't support, you know, larger multifamily developments or three or four-family as, as common. But again, that, you know, that, that reflects sort of the established, um, uh, patterns in Andover.
John, what's the difference between a three and four-family and a townhouse? I guess, I thought they were kind of the same thing.
Yeah, um, I, you know, I think a, a townhouse, um, can be sort of more than three or four family, but I, I picture it as, it, you know, as a, a row semi-detached. Um, a three or a four family, you know, tends to be in sort of a single structure with a single entrance sort of, sort of, um, setup, you know, a two-over-two or something like that. Um, but yeah, I mean, it's, it's, they can be very similar.
I know my mom, at one point, she lived in this, uh, housing community that had, they were all triplexes. And so you had, you know, two end units and then you had a unit in the center. You know, they each had, uh, a two-car garage, each had a, uh, you know, their own entryway in that. Um, but I thought that suited itself, well, I thought, one, it was very nice. But two, it was, uh, well-suited to have the center unit being the affordable component. And, and that gets you your, your one-third affordable that, uh, were required to have. And, uh, so I was disappointed when I saw this and I, I think it's probably because we haven't, uh, let folks know very well what we're looking at.
Yeah.
To do that, but that might be something we have to, uh,
Yeah.
How to overcome that when we get to the end, uh, where, you know, the town has clearly spoken, they don't want three and four-bedroom units.
Well, that's, I think that we could probably do some more nuanced, uh, poll- Well, that's, I think that we could probably do some more nuanced polling on that. And, and we've done in other towns, particularly when looking at the Affordable Housing Plans, which were, you know, done the last couple of years. Are, are like basically visual, visual preferences, you know, where they're shown something like what you're describing for your, for your mother, Jed, where it was, you know, a, a three-side-by-side, which I would picture as kind of a townhouse structure. Or, you know, or, you know, a, a, a three-story apartment sort of thing. But yeah, people can express, you know, preferences visually also, and that, that may be something we want to explore.
I was disappointed when the apartments got a bit more favorable rating than the three and four-family.
I, and I think, you know, and, and, you know, not wanting to read into responses there, but, you know, I think apartments tend to be single-location, you know, all, all sort of on its own, at least in, in suburban towns, that we don't have apartments, 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 like you might have in, in, you know, Tomwell.
Big clusters.
Right. Okay, so we looked at the community resilience and sustainability priorities there. The most popular being upgrading roads and bridges to address, you know, increased flood volumes and things like that to deal with climate change. And the rest of the ones were fairly clustered, upgraded power, data infrastructure, and making sure Andover's roads and bridges are, are properly maintained, where, you know, popular, but there was no, you know, truly unpopular option. I think, you know, people tended to have slightly different, slightly different, you know, third and fourth choices, which kind of even those, even that noise out a bit. Somewhat similar, we asked about open space and conservation and natural resources. Which are the priorities focusing on trails? And interconnection of open space was the blue line, that was the most popular. There was also, you know, strong support for investing stewardship of properties and open space that we already have, investing in active recreation, which is to say things like ball field, you know, soccer, pickleball, tennis, baseball, and then focusing on efforts on Andover Lake as a, as an important natural resource and conservation feature. So, you know, no, no real, real core support, again, other than, other than the statement, Andover has sufficient open space, which received the lowest support, which is again, you know, it's a, the strong support for conservation and particularly, particularly trails and, and connections. We asked for people to rate, you know, from basically one to five, strongly agree, agree, neutral, disagree, strongly disagree on several issues about, about long-range planning. All of these were very much in the middle, you know, a, a, an answer of three is neutral, two is a, is a agree. All of them received, you know, basically between four-point-three-five and four-point-five-five, except for Route Six. The town should actively market available and undeveloped commercial land along Route Six. Forty percent, by far the strongest response, said strongly agree. Another twenty-four percent said agree. So that had by, I would say, you know, overall, that was completely the strongest agreement in terms of long-term planning. So as we saw with the economic development question at the beginning, Route Six is clearly a focal point. We then asked about town services. And it was funny, I was filling in the, manually, a number of survey responses that I believe, Jed, you must have harvested at some sort of senior breakfast or senior luncheon. Because there were probably twelve of those, and all of them, all of them had services for seniors as the top priority and, and Andover's public schools as a very low priority. Without casting aspersions on, on the people who sold it out, that was, there was clearly an interest group. But what, what we saw overall is strong support for Andover Public Schools and Public Works, roads, bridges, trails, and then obviously, you know, a sort of moderate support, all in the middle for seniors, general government, parks and rec, et cetera. Transfer station was surprisingly the lowest. I, I, some of the, the surveys I had looked through, I ranked those quite high, but I think overall that sort of, you know, leveled out.
That might be because of the upgrades that have been recently done there at the transfer station. I don't know, but.
So, yeah, so.
Certainly a lot better than it used to be.
Taken care of, yeah. So this is now a question of concerns. How concerned are you about various issues? Again, the same five-point scale, very concerned to not concerned at all. Again, you know, everything tends to, to land in the middle, somewhere between, you know, neutral and, and concerned. All of those had, you know, somewhere between, you know, two-point-three and three-point-three, which is sort of the, the slightly concerned end of neutral. The two strongest responses with over thirty percent saying very concerned were aging infrastructure and affordability of living in Andover. And I think that's, that's very telling, you know, the, you know, there, there were, there was some strong response on overdevelopment and loss of natural resources and changing demographics. But I think some of those, those, those things are intimately related. But I, that, that's, this was, I think, maybe one of the most interesting questions thus far.
Happy to see the low number there on crime.
Yes, yeah, that, I mean, people basically a three, basically people are neutral about crime. You know, I think they're, no one's, is gonna, there, there are very few people who are saying, you know, not concerned at all, but, but people were not too terribly alarmed, it seems. I did word cloud, this isn't too revealing yet. I think we want to filter these out a little bit. So we had asked two questions, free response, open-ended. What's something you hope will happen to Andover in the next ten years? And then later, what's something you're worried about? And so again, this is word cloud, the most, more time a word appears, the, the bigger it is. So, you know, you can pick up some of these words, you know, infrastructure, schools, businesses, Andover Plaza, I thought was interesting, was a multiple thing, senior housing, retail development, affordable housing, restaurants, stay small town, town center. I think there's some good responses there. I think what we'll try to do to, is refine this a little bit and take out, you know, simple repetitive words. We don't need the word town or the word Andover. So we'll, we'll, we'll see if we can make those a little bit more usable. But it's, it's a nice visual tool. Second is the, the question about worried. What are you worried about? And this, you know, fewer words were used that, that really popped. Elementary school, businesses, taxes, crime, aging, climate change. You know, if, if you combine property taxes, increasing taxes, taxes, you know, tax base, you know, a lot of those things are, are circling around, obviously, the same topic. So we can, we can find ways to, to refine that. But it's, it's interesting to sort of see what, what, what people are saying like all at once. And then we asked a couple of questions about demographics, so just so we can see who was taking the survey. Again, you know, my, my initial thought, having, you know, my own bias of having entered a number of these manually from, from a senior luncheon, I was surprised that, that the seventy-plus population was relatively small and it was about the same as the young family. You know, the thirty-to-forty-four-year-old demographic was about the same as the seventy-plus. And, you know, most responses, like most people in town, somewhere between forty-five and seventy. And so I, you know, I think the response, at least at this point, is fairly reflective of the adult population, you know, demographic in, in Andover. And then, you know, the income is, is probably also reflective. You know, our, our, basically three largest income cohorts were, you know, between seventy-five thousand and over one-fifty, so seventy-five and up was, was a lot of responses. So these are most likely established, you know, homeowner, employed or, or comfortably retired. And again, you know, as we saw, do you own or rent your home? Looks like we're at about ninety-four percent own the home with a very small rental population. And, and that, you know, we know that, that, you know, the rental numbers are higher than this. So we're, we're getting a spike overabundance of homeowners and, and we may want to see if there's something we can do to, to solicit renters a little bit. And also, I would say, younger, younger adults and younger families. So, again, the survey's gonna, gonna stay open. It's up to, to you guys when, when we ultimately close it out. But there could be some other things we do to solicit additional responses. And one of those things that, that's been somewhat successful in other places is if the school is amenable to this sort of thing, or oftentimes, we can request that the school do a, you know, a, a stuffer for the kids going home. So, you know, it goes into the kids' folders and comes home with them to encourage families to participate in this process. That would really be my primary suggestion to, to reach those kids, unless there's some way, good, good distribution list through parks and recs where we can, we can solicit particularly, you know, your, your young families. But that's where we are right now.
John?
Yes, ma'am.
Hi, this is Leanne. I think it was an excellent idea to include the seventy-plus age group here because I see a lot of surveys that just say sixty-five and older and people are quote, "living longer" unquote. And so every, this, this allowed there not just to be one lumped-in group of people who are sixty-five and older, which I think is important because, you know, you could have people seventy and older who are the parents of people who are in their sixties. And I think it also points up a couple of things about, it may give us some indication of the people who are interested in staying in town. As far as the question about the senior housing and then including people who are seventy and over. And I think it also points up that not everybody, say, age sixty and older, retires at the same time. Some people never retire, some people want to downsize, some people don't. So I think that was a good tool to have, to break it up into another age group because, like I said, most surveys I see just say everybody's sixty-five and older, period.
Thank you. And I think what, what I think we will do, hopefully at the end, we'd probably do, we'd like to do some cross tabs and on, on some of these things. So I think, as I, as I said in my, my little anecdote, you know, noting that, you know, a lot of your seventy-plus folks are obviously concerned with, you know, senior facilities than, you know, and I am sure as we, as we break it out into the responses from thirty-five to forty-four-year-olds, the school is probably a higher priority. So I want to do that, that formal cross tab, as well as probably word clouds or a modified word cloud for each of the major demographic groups. Because it would be interesting to see what are the hopes of the seventy-plus folks? What are the hopes of the thirty-five to forty-four-year-olds? And what are the, what are their fears as well, or their concerns as well? I, but I think, yeah, it's, it's valuable to have broken that out.
I have a question about the demographics that you had there with the types of homes. We're working on getting the affordable housing and the types of, like, we have a senior, I'm trying to think, in-law apartment on the house. So with an in-law apartment, you have the main house and you have a little apartment. Where do those get categorized? It's not really a single-family, yet it's not an apartment. Where do those get put?
I think the, well, I think it, it depends on what the actual structure of it is. If the, you know, if, because sometimes there are sort of senior communities, active adult communities that are either freestanding sort of bungalow-type things and in sort of a tight cluster that would probably be, well, it depends on what, how we defined it. Those would probably be single-family detached, but, you know, in many cases, they would be essentially a condominium or a common interest community sort of setup.
I know in our neighborhood and a few blocks away of at least four houses that have an in-law apartment attached, and they're attached. So is that considered still a single-family house or is it an accessory apartment?
Isn't that the single-family house with the accessory apartment?
That's what we would, we would call that.
Was that a category?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
And, you know, and also it's how we, how we harvest our data. Is, you know, so that, that question was the preference question. Well, I think the single-family, well, hold on, hold on. The single-family with accessory apartments was in the survey. I don't think accessory apartments was in the demographics presentation. It was in the demographic.
No, it wasn't. It was in the survey, John.
Right, so, but if we, and, and this was the, the, the single-family attached, single-family detached, two apartments, three or four apartments from the demographics, that's census data. We can actually get better data from our assessor using Kama codes because in, in Kama, single-family, single-family with accessory apartment and two-family are actually three different codes. So we can do a, a much finer-grain analysis of what we got.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, John, apologies, I missed it earlier, but how many total responses do you have at this point?
A little over a hundred-and-eighty.
Okay.
And that are, they're recorded. Again, Jed is telling me we have some, some hard copy to be entered. And we've been getting two, three, four a day trickling in. So, you know, keeping it, I don't see a real downside to keeping it open for a while.
And there's two tools we haven't used yet, and, you know, Eric and I were working on something to send out to the, all the board and commission members to make sure that they understood the importance and send it in. And I don't think that ever got sent out. And so I'll have to follow up with Eric on that. And we wanted to do that, and then we were going to follow up with the communication, you know, blast going out to the entire town to fill it in. So we've got a couple other big things to use. And I like John's idea about getting it out through the kids at the school. I think, one, I think the school would like to get it out that way. I don't know, John, if you had a thought on, do we just send the QR code out? Because most of the, the parents are younger and, and they, they do that stuff better. They certainly, we don't need to send the paper copy home for them. That is not the group that wants the paper copy to send in.
Well, I, yeah, so I, the, you know, the, we could send, yeah, right. But I'm wondering if we want to send a, you know, a half-sheet that has the QR code on it. So it gets stuffed in the boxes and then kid, parent, kids bring it home, parents can just scan the QR code. I want to be sensitive to not, not overburdening the school with having to distribute something like this, but if there's someone friendly with the school district that I could work with, I'd be.
I think Anne's that person.
I think the, I used to do an email to all the parents, like, I don't know if they still do that, Anne, like the Friday update or the Sunday night update from the principal.
I, I don't know if they do that, but they probably have something. I know a few years ago, they did. Every single Friday, they sent, it really was Sunday night, yeah.
But if we were to send the half-sheet home of that ad that we were in, in the, the River East, which was very small, we put that half, a half-sheet size, so it didn't get lost with all the other stuff or even a full sheet. But that's probably all we need to, to do to get it out to the parents.
Yeah, Anne, if you want to, if you could just be in touch with me, if, if, you know, either you could ask or just give me the right person to ask and I'll pursue it. Thank you.
Any other comments from the commission at this point? Okay, and, you know, the most positive thing I saw of all the data was that little demographic that showed the, the young kids, you know, increasing. I thought that was great news. Then my, my thinking is that you can increase the load at the school without having to increase the cost so much because most of the, the school budget is fixed cost until you start adding more teachers or something. But we're never gonna, you know, we're never gonna exceed the capacity of building there. So anyhow, I thought that was good news. Anything else you want to do, add to a step point, John? Amber, you had a comment?
No, I was just gonna say it looks great so far.
Yep, okay, yep, I agree. So I think that concludes the old business. Next up is the approval of the minutes from the meeting on sixteenth of January. And I'll make a motion that the minutes be approved. And I think there were maybe two comments on the minutes. Anne Marie, weren't you in attendance at that meeting?
I was, yes.
Okay, so you should be on the list of participants. And then down under new business, where we were talking about the Burn App Brook Road property swap. There was a line in there that said the town would give up land in return that is in the floodplain. And somebody pointed out to me that we probably wouldn't have said that. And I went back to review it, as did Marina, neither of us could find that. So I'm not exactly sure how that thought get in there. But I would recommend that we strike that line from the minutes because it was not said. Any other comments on the minutes? I think I made a motion to approve. I can't recall if we had a second.
Yes.
Yes.
Who seconded it?
I think Leanne and I both seconded at the same time.
Okay, well, we'll give that to Leanne. And I'll call for a vote on approval of the minutes. Anne?
Aye.
Leanne?
Aye.
Steve?
Aye.
Anne Marie?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, the motion passes five zero zero. Next up on the agenda is administrative reports. Jim?
Yes, seems to be a bit of an uptick in activity of a seasonal nature. A lot of additions, sheds, et cetera. Is a one, a new single-family home on Shoddy Mill application came in. I am working on a matrix of costs associated with planning and zoning commissions. And I believe it was a suggestion of the Board of Selectmen, see what other towns were charging for subdivisions for variances, what have you. Bring that together, just take a look at and see where Town of Manover stands. I am involved in a number of enforcement cases. I did reach out to the Connecticut Meditation Center, which is one thirty-one Route Six. And they, which is the Buddhist, otherwise known as the Buddhist temple. And I did get a call today. I did not speak to the gentleman, got a message indicated they would be coming forth with an application at some point very soon. I have yet to contact the mountain of worship, which is on Shoddy Mill, which is a church of sorts that's been in operation for quite many, quite many years. Reaching out to them to see what we can do to bring them into compliance. I'm working with Protech or, I'm sorry, Benjamin Franklin on Mary Valley, Lake Road, to address their site conditions. More particularly, they have a number of boats and a trailer out there, which is not on their approved site plan. And their lighting is not in compliance. Other than that, I have nothing to report. Any questions, be happy to address.
So a question for the commission, and I don't know, I've got a matrix that Jim puts out. It's the blatant violation status. And I can't remember if he or I sent that out to the commission members or not. Does anybody recall seeing that?
Yeah, I think it came out once with an email.
Should've come out late last week.
Yeah.
The last date I have on the matrix, Jim, was February twelfth. But, so, maybe for the next meeting, this gets back to Anne Marie's comment earlier about how many violations are we working on? And I think Jim's got a two-page blight violation status. And a significant number of them are resolved. So there's been a lot of good work going on. Obviously, we just care about the ones that are still open. And, but we'll take, we'll make it so that we get that out to everybody again. And I think that's a good document. It shows Jim's doing a lot of good work on that. Couple of them have been very hard to get moving along. And I think the ordinance that we talked about tonight might make some of those a little easier.
I was just wondering, I had a question for Jim that I don't know if it'd be blight or just, I don't know what's going on. One fourteen Hendy Road, a house that has like plastic wrapped around the first floor? Do you familiar with that or know what's going on?
It doesn't appear to be a blight or a zoning violation. The building official was brought in on that, and I don't know what the status of that is. I can find out.
It's been that way for over ten years, I think. I didn't know what was going on.
I believe the owners started out on some sort of rehab project and it became a little bit bigger and it was a lot more rot. Why it's still wrapped, I don't know. And whether it's in violation of anything, I'm not aware of. I can check into it.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions for Jim? Okay, next up is John. You know, John's doing an awful lot of good work for us on plant and conservation and that. He's starting to get his fingers in a lot of other things helping the town out. And I wanted to give him his nickels worth to share with us any thoughts or comments that he had each meeting. So, all yours, John.
Thanks, Jed. I, you know, obviously, I've spoken enough this evening, working on the trail grants. Hopefully, the rec park, rec field grant will be moving forward. We did receive money to do some improvements at the soccer field and put in a playscape and pickleball courts. Hopefully, that'll be moving forward. I would anticipate, I mean, it's in Eric's hands, but I would anticipate construction probably, I don't know, maybe some work in the fall. But that's in Eric's timeline. And the other thing, I would just note that I've had some correspondence recently with Ryan Fitch from Fitch Family Farms, who are looking to sell their Christmas tree property on Route Six. Just wanted to reach out to them to kind of get a sense of how and where they're marketing and maybe get, basically introduce myself. I haven't met the Fitch family yet to just make sure that they understand that it's an important property and we would be interested in being in touch with potential buyers to talk about options and visions and that sort of thing. So kind of want to get ahead of that a little bit. So we'll hopefully be meeting with Ryan sooner than later.
John, what was he specifically asking of you?
Well, he emailed me thinking he was getting Jed. But it was, it was, it was basically to reach out and, let's see. So he's hoping to touch base with you and the board. The property is for sale, looking to build a relationship with the town and what could be the next step for our farm and for us in terms of commercial development. And so he, you know, basically wanted to sit down and kind of talk about a plan of attack. So, you know, I think understanding, you know, understanding what the town has in mind there would probably help them market the property.
And I don't know Ryan Fitch either, you know, I don't know him at all. But I do recall when John was going through the survey responses, you know, the number one item for economic development was for the town to be involved with the property owners on Route Six for developing. And so this effort seems like it's in line with what people are looking for the town to be doing. So I think that's good news.
So would this be in lieu of him being able to sell it in the foreseeable future? Is he looking into things if it doesn't sell?
I didn't get that sense. And when I, as I responded to him, you know, saying that we'd be happy to meet and talk about options. And his response was, no, I mean, I think they are looking to sell. You know, literally, he says, I actually have no plans for the property of it to sell it. But I would like to sit down to talk about possible ideas and ways to get this sold to the right commercial development. Because I think they want to be, you know, a good steward and a good, you know, community partner.
Okay, thank you.
John, do you know the size of the parcel?
Yikes, I don't offhand. I can find it relatively quickly. If you want to move on and I'll see if I can pull that up and.
Okay, well, and so I will move on quickly to the inland wetlands water course liaison. And our meeting for this month was canceled because we had no applications. And so we didn't do anything there. Next up on the agenda is commission discussion. Anybody have anything that we would like to discuss? Oh, come on, Anne.
I said it's broke already.
Okay, so before the meeting started, Anne was asking me if we had any thoughts on going back to an in-person venue for the summer months. And I'm not opposed to that. My concern about that is I know John has got a considerable distance and would not be joining us. He would continue to be remote. I am a little concerned about some of the people, you know. Thankfully, our attendance and membership has been very good, and I really appreciate that. I know Kevin lives about as far away from the meeting as you can get and still be in Anjo. And I would think that that would be a little bit, I don't know. How do you feel about that, Kevin?
I mean, it's definitely not the most convenient thing in the world. As you said, I'm pretty much as far as you could possibly get with still being in the town. I don't know, it's, you know, typical day in the life. Some days are easy, some days are difficult, some days work gets in the way and I stay a lot later than intended, you know, so on and so forth. So I don't know, I can't say one way or another.
So what I think I'm gonna do is I'll send out, you know, an email. And everybody, you know, don't reply all, just reply to me. Your preference would be meeting in person, meeting online, or you don't care?
And. I guess one question I do have is if you decided to do in-person, will you still be doing, will it still be recorded to be logged for the public?
It would. And I know Anne, who is, you're probably most excited about getting back to in-person meeting, is taking it on herself to become an owl expert.
Yeah.
So that, I guess that's where I was going. If we're doing an owl, I know I've done a bunch of meetings, you know, for work and whatnot, where we can do hybrid meetings. I mean, I know, I know it's a little more of an ambitious for some people. But from my experience, it hasn't been that big. So people that can make it that night can be in the room with the owl or whatever video conference host we use. And then other people can dial in if, as necessary. And that would help us achieve the best attendance we can. You know, everyone can still try to make it even if it's last minute and people can make it in person, great. Just, yeah.
Jed, to that end, truly, there's a change in the state statute a couple of years ago, following the COVID protocols, is that now commissioners have the right to require a hybrid accommodation. So if any commission member, remember, the public cannot, but any commission member can request and require a virtual accommodation to even an in-person meeting. So if, you know, if one or more members, you know, would like to participate remotely, you have that right by state statute. And the town has to accommodate.
Yep.
Yeah. I also have an answer to the family farm question, but you go ahead.
Nope, that's all I wanted to say about the meeting thing. So go ahead, John.
Okay, so actually, so can you see my screen, the GIS map on it?
Yep, yes.
So when I looked for the Fitch family properties on Route Six, actually, more than one came up. I assume the one we're talking about, and I could be very wrong, is the one on the south side of Route Six. That's more of a frontage. There is also a little bit farther to the west, a large part of their family farm that has frontage on Route Six and then goes back on the adjacent road. But this property, if this is the one we're talking about, is fifteen and a half acres. With lots and lots and lots of road frontage.
Lots of what?
Road frontage.
Frontage, yeah, yeah.
Visibility.
That looks great.
It looks like the listing on RE/MAX is for fifteen point five acres right now.
So that's the one we're talking about.
Yep.
Okay, so there's your, there's your answer.
Thank you.
Jed?
Yes, Leanne.
Just to go back to the meeting format for a minute. I think one consideration needs to be the acoustics in the community room. They're really bad. They've been that way since the community room was built. And maybe Anne can tell us from the Board of Selectmen if there's any discussion about remedying that. Because it can, some meetings are much better than others. And if it's not a meeting where the transition is particularly good, I mean, the meeting, even if you're in the room. I mean, I went to a meeting there recently and somebody was no more than ten feet away from me and they were speaking to the front of the room and I had the strain to listen to what they were saying because the acoustics are so bad. And they're, they can be worse on a Zoom meeting. So Anne, has the Board of Selectmen discussed lately doing anything to remedy that?
They haven't discussed anything recently. My best guess for doing a hybrid Zoom meeting would be if we have the table set so that it's pretty close to the owl, which is the piece of equipment that helps make a hybrid meeting. We stay close to that, you can hear better.
It would be really good if, okay, I see. Or if people had individual microphones or, you know, something, that would go a long way. But, thank you, were you finished with your remarks about what might help that situation?
Yeah, that's the only thing I know of right now. And I suppose that maybe when the new building is finished, we could meet in there sometimes. And it would have better acoustics, it's a different kind of ceiling and not as high. I know that community room has that really high ceiling with the wooden ceiling, which makes it very echoey.
We could also run a few, you know, offline tests, not in a meeting, just to see how the audio comes out. And I know a lot of those, like the owl and other things that I've used, have pretty good noise filtering. So we just have to play with the filtering aspects to see how much we need to take out the reverb in the room or whatever else it is.
Okay, interesting, thanks.
Yep.
Any other, any other commission discussion things? Okay, I'll move on to miscellaneous. You probably don't have, there's not too much difference between that commission discussion. Any other public comments? Okay, the date of our next regular scheduled meeting is April sixteenth. And I'll let you know if we do anything different that might be premature to change, but cool, cool. We've got a month to work on it. we've got a month to work on that. Month's a long time. So, uh, I'll let you know, uh, how that's going to go. And, uh, if nobody's got anything else, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you, Steve. You got in on that one. Um, all in favor, raise your hand or say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes five zero zero. Thank you for hosting, John. Uh, thank you all for coming. Appreciate the support and, uh, and we'll be in touch. Got a couple of things to work on for next month. So.